I'm sorry.
Excuse my spelling.
Okay.
And terrible penmanship.
Well, I'm sure they have some fun battles.
At least those two young issues, those two sections, seems to be that they're about the same place.
Yeah.
Again, good morning. We're back in regular session. All board members are present. We have two executive session items on the addendum agenda. Counselor.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Executive session item one on the addendum agenda concerns Valencia Colb Properties LLC et al versus Pima County. This is United States District Court case number CV 01319DCB. This lawsuit alleges that the plaintiffs were damaged by Pima County's actions related to the alignment of and planned improvements to the Valencia Colb intersection. In November 2014, the court dismissed eight of the nine counts in plaintiff's complaint. Plaintiffs have offered to dismiss the action in its entirety in a manner consistent with the court's ruling. County Attorney's Office recommends that the county proceed as discussed in executive session and that the board authorize the chair to execute a settlement here we're going to have in the county.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Elias.
I'll move the county attorney's recommendation.
Clear.
Motion in a second to approve the county attorney's recommendation. Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Counselor, next item.
Yes, Madam Chair. Members of the board, executive session item two on the addendum agenda pertains to CHH Tucson Partnership LP versus Pima County and El Conquistador MAH2 LLC versus Pima County. These are consolidated tax court case numbers TX 2010, 1421, TX 2011, 379, and TX 2012, 380, and TX 2013, 155. These cases involve the El Conquistador Resort and adjoining property and the Comfort Club. Pima County Attorney's Office seeks authority to proceed as discussed in executive session.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, I move the county attorney's recommendation.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion in a second to approve. Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. We now move on to the regular agenda. Item six, blood control district board, reprimanding habitat mitigation. What's the pleasure of the board on this item?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Miller.
I move to approve item number six for reprimanding habitat mitigation in Lutley of $3,101,760.
Motion in a second to approve. Objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to the consent calendar. What's the pleasure of the board? And there were, I think there was a change, so the consent calendar has amended. What's the pleasure of the board on this?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Miller.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar as amended.
Motion in a second to approve consent as amended. Are there any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. Moving on to item eight, under county administrator unfinished business, board of supervisors' policy. What's the pleasure of the board? You have several supervisor volunteers.
Madam Chair, this is an issue that I've done a lot of thinking on. And as my previous statements on this dais have been, I don't believe that anything inappropriate has happened. I disagree with the opinion of the Goldwater Institute. However, I do agree and have made such statements before on this issue on this dais that there needs to be greater transparency so that when we do such actions, it needs to be public, it needs to be transparent, and it needs to be open. And I've thought of what, how to accomplish those goals. And so I'd like to try a motion and then obviously have a discussion on the motion itself. Because I don't really like any of the options in their entirety. So let me give this one a shot. Let me move that we prohibit the current policy of using our monies from our budget to do these discretionary expenditures. Number two, that effective immediately, all contingency fund requests for social service agencies go to the outside agency review committee to determine whether or not they fit within county priorities and concurrently reviewed by the county attorney's office to make sure they meet the legal grounds. And thirdly, direct the county administrator to in the 2015-16 budget, again dealing with small grants to social service agencies, create a process for doing them.
Second, Madam Chair, I'd like to talk about...
There's motion and a second. Supervisor Carol.
Madam Chair, I'd like to start the conversation on Mr. Valades' motion by saying first off, I'd like to give credit where it's due to the Goldwater Institute. I think that they've gone now for years writing perception, if not reality, in certain local, state, and national governments to more expose the transparency side of this system we call democracy. 50th anniversary of Goldwater's historic '64 campaign. I'm proud to say that they have selected a Tucson person as a board of their directors, Chris Gleason, who's a friend. And I think in my conversations with him and other board members, not just recently, but at their annual dinner back in January, in their heart, they know they're right. And I agree that this policy should be discontinued when it comes to future requests from the contingency fund. Those will be at budget time and not outside of the ordinary budget process.
What I'm suggesting is to hold. First of all, we've seen a number of requests come for contingency funds by this board and we vote on it here. What I want to make sure is that there is a public process, that there is an open, transparent process, that such requests first go to the committee itself for their review and examination about whether or not that goes within the county...
And by the committee, you mean outside agency?
Correct.
Okay.
Which we check.
And concurrently reviewed by the county attorney to make sure they meet legal grounds.
So that's...
And then direct the county administrator for the 2015-16 budget, come up with a process for such small grants as we're talking about in discretionary.
These are social service agency grants. Because we've never had a mechanism for these smaller grants. It's always been larger amounts.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Miller.
First of all, I'd like to thank the Goldwater Institute as well because I did contact them to analyze this back last October when I didn't get any response from the Attorney General's Office. And I'd like to say I do believe these expenditures, as were done in the past, violated the Arizona gift clause. That is my opinion, the opinion of the Goldwater Institute, and also the opinion of my personal attorney, Michael Laberty, who is now the chief counsel for the governor of the state of Arizona, who I paid for this opinion because I wanted a third opinion because we had two conflicting opinions. He agreed with Goldwater on this issue. No other counties in Arizona allow supervisors to pick and choose who to donate funds to. We should be using our department budgets to do, we should not be using our department budgets to do charitable donations. We have grant funds, we have an outside agency review that specifically allocates those types of funds. Acting in any other way gives the appearance that we may be in it for personal gain as we accept, you know, adulation and applause at events for giving these grants and small grant monies, as we call them. I've reviewed many of these so-called public purpose grants that were allowed in the past two years. One was sending flowers to a friend's funeral. One was purchasing pizza, leaving 30% tips. Buying tables at events and even honoring some family members, getting honorable mention in the programs at these events, and also being recognized as a supervisor clearly is a political move to garner favor for that particular supervisor. Purchasing tables for family members and friends is a violation of the public trust. The leftover funds from supervisor budgets, I believe, should be turned back to the general fund and allocated from there. Opinions are just that. Pima County attorney said this practice was okay, but again, it is an opinion until it goes through a court of law. Goldwater Institute did in fact state, they analyzed these particular donations and they did in fact state that they believe there was a violation of the Arizona gift clause and threatened lawsuit. That's a serious threat from the Goldwater Institute. And I spoke with Barry Goldwater Jr. last week, and he was fully aware of this as well. And my attorney agreed with that assessment. And there are two tests that must meet, we must meet to give these types of donation. Number one, does it serve a public purpose? And the second test is the value received by the government, Pima County, so unreasonable in proportion to the amount paid that the payment amounts to a subsidy to the private entity. So that needs to be part of the process. And I think that has been part of the process for grants from the outside agency review committee. I would say the majority of the $87,000 donated over the past two years in this manner don't meet both tests. They must meet both. How does purchasing a table where a supervisor gets honorable mention and recognition serve a public purpose? That's my question. End of the day, the only ones who should have been given honorable mention and recognition were the taxpayers of Pima County because it was your money that paid for these tables. This is so wrong, and no other county in Arizona partakes in this type of practice. And to quote an article written in the Arizona Daily Star by Tim Stellar, he contacted other counties, and most of them were stunned that Pima County allowed this practice. He called to see if other supervisors were allowed to donate out of their budgets from other counties. I believe we should end this practice and also that of giving monies out of the board supervisors contingency fund. That is why I brought this item forward several months ago. This fund is for, the board supervisors contingency fund is specifically for unseen emergencies that the board misses when we're doing our budgeting. And we need to keep those monies there to ensure that we're ready and have that money there if we do in fact need it. It is wrong, and I hope you all think long and hard today about doing what is right, what is right for the taxpayers and not only for that, for what is right for our appearance as a board. These are, you know, being able to give these amounts of money, small, however we want to describe them, it is still taxpayer money. I was criticized for months over a $120 business luncheon. I have since paid that back in many ways, but it was the wrong thing to do. To, and I will tell you, that was $120, and many of the people that criticized me were involved in this $87,000 that was donated over the last two years, which I find very ironic. The right thing to do is to end the practice, period. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. I would point out in your attorney's letter, it refers to the Turkin decision, which is public money being donated to a private for-profit entity, not for, not for, the proportionality test is correct, but the Turkin decision is related to private for-profit entities, not public entities.
Madam Chair, I agree with that, but he also pointed out other cases that he analyzed in the process, and I reviewed this opinion with him ad nauseam via the phone, so we had a very long discussion about it and all the possibilities. And you're correct on the, I agree with you, however, there were other cases analyzed in this process, as he noted in his opinion. Thank you.
No, thank you. And I would agree, I am going to support the motion. I think one of the conundrums we had is we had no way of doing small dollar grants in the past. And I think the motion corrects that and will be a possibility, because I know there are many small 501(c)(3)'s that provide a public purpose that don't have paid staff but actually do good things in the community. And I think the intent of the motion, and I want to ask Supervisor Valades if I'm correct, is that we will have no process for dealing with those small grants.
The intent is to create a public, open, transparent process.
Thank you. Supervisor Carol.
Madam Chair, I just want to clarify that in Supervisor Valades' motion, county administrator item 8b3 is addressed, and that's to discontinue this policy.
I think that it was.
If anyone would like to separate that, I'd be more than willing to allow it, but I have seconded the motion, and I do that hoping that we can correct something that I believe was an oversight by county administration over the years. And glad, as I said before, that the Goldwater Institute has brought it to our attention. The possibility now is that we each have members appointed to the outside agency review committee, and those will be addressed in a public setting. For any of the board of supervisors to support that openly, that's up to them. Madam Chair, I do want to say that on this process, I have spoken to Jared Blanchard, and of course, my staff has talked to him more recently about this, but I think that we would have their support in the motion that Mr. Valades has made in order to terminate any further interest in this by the Goldwater Institute. So satisfied with this procedure and also with this forecast of how the vote might go. Jared Blanchard from the Goldwater Institute did say if we went along with the discontinuation, they would follow suit and not have any further interest.
Thank you. Supervisor Miller.
Can I ask Supervisor Valades to please repeat his motion?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Miller, it was a three-part motion, first of all, to discontinue the existing practice. Number two, to, as of today, any future contingency request to a social service agency goes first to the outside agency review committee for the purposes of determining whether or not it fits within the county priorities and concurrently to the county attorney to make sure that it fits legal parameters. Thirdly, directing the county administrator in the 2015-16 budget, the next fiscal year's budget, to come up with a process to deal in an open, transparent, and very public manner the granting of small grant funds.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Valades, just to clarify, so you're part two, where you have the outside agency review, you are stating that individual supervisors could still donate monies from their budget as...
No.
No? Okay. Okay. So to end the practice altogether. Okay. Thank you very much for the correction.
And obviously, two and three apply to social service agencies.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Well...
Supervisor Elias.
You know, I'm going to support the motion because I'm all in favor of transparency, but to twist this issue into saying that I've made donations to agencies in the past but political returns is simply not true, that's a lie. If you look at my history and if you look at the history of my family, we have supported local nonprofits, we have supported agencies that try and improve the lives of the poor, and I'm not ashamed of that, I never will be. And I think this is all fine, and I fully intend to continue doing the work that I've been doing all along as a Pima County supervisor.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Elias. Supervisor Miller.
I'd just like to state that to Supervisor Elias, I think the most important thing, first of all, is Supervisor Valades' motion to end the practice, I mean, is inappropriate, but also that the appearance that it gives using taxpayer monies was, you know, could be construed that way. Okay? And so I'm not accusing you of this, I'm just saying this is how it appears to the public and that we should not be doing this, so that's...
I concur with Supervisor Miller, and I think that we do need a process for the small grants that we did not have in place this way.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Carol.
Madam Chair, according, I appreciate Mr. Elias' comment about transparency, and he had made a motion to have an interim policy which in fact puts each and every expenditure on the agenda for consideration in a vote up or down. What will happen to that policy? Because in, I think, the process of creating a most transparent board, I think in the state of Arizona when it comes to office expenditures, I really applauded that motion, and I think it would be if it's going to remain in fact a policy instead of an interim policy, we might be able to separate in that vote that might even be unanimous.
Mr. Hoppelberry.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I think staff is certainly hopeful that you discontinue that practice because of the amount of cost and paperwork necessary for staff to place a $20 expenditure on the agenda.
So we'll leave that on the Arizona Daily Star review. Budgets each year to see what...
Yes, Madam Chair, they're already there, they're in QuickBooks.
Okay. And lastly, I do want to say before this item is closed, because I've enjoyed my work here at the board of supervisors, and each and every year have given back usually the most money to the general fund from my budget. And I want to say that in the future, it's very important for all of us to realize that the outside agencies committee is one that we haven't interfered with. We don't, we don't get involved, I don't endorse one there or the other from District Four, but I do realize that each and every board member has an appointment to the outside agencies. And Chuck, if there's someone here that can explain the balance of the membership of the outside agencies committee, I see Mr. Atha, we could talk about how objective this board is and how transparent it is, because certainly it seems so to me.
Madam Chair, to the point of Supervisor Carol's original question, if I may address... To the best of my recollection, the original motion was that the portion that required that every expenditure of every district office come before this board was going to go away once we dealt with this policy in general. What does stay in place, however, is the requirement that the end of every fiscal year, we release all board expenditures in GTE. So that stays in place, if I recall correct. So that's still going to be released, and it's still going to be public information in the county.
Yes. Correct. Mr. Hoppelberry.
Yes.
Speak outside agency, Supervisor.
Just the outside agencies, individual members appointed by each member of the board, as well as I appoint a member, and that committee frankly has done a very good job at balancing the views and values of the social service agency request and allocating funds. So my opinion is that in the past, done a very good job, and I expect that they will continue to do so. Just as information, on page two of my memorandum, to appear to not, District Five's budget for fiscal year 1112, it appears that he went over his expenditure. And we've had some discussions among the staff and the finance staff on how this happened. And during the fiscal year, it was projected to be much larger. Our finance staff developed plans to bring that within budget, and our finance staff gave Supervisor Elias the wrong advice. And so that's really our fault, not Supervisor Elias'.
Thank you. Any further comments?
I'd just like to say, Supervisor Valades, I think your solution is a really good one.
I do too. I also extend my thanks. Let's call the question then, roll call.
Supervisor Carol. Supervisor Elias. Supervisor Miller.
I'm...
Supervisor Valades.
Aye.
Chair Barnes.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We now move on to hearings, franchises, license, and permits, items nine through 11. What's the pleasure of the board? These are hearings. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address us on these items in opposition? If not, what's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor.
Move the oath of military to approve item nine through 11.
Second. Motion in a second. Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. We now move on to the addendum agenda, item six, finance and risk management, request for exemption. What's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, I'll move the item.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve. Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to contracts and awards, community services, employment, and training, item seven. What's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor, Supervisor Valades, sorry.
Move approval item seven.
Second. Motion in a second. Objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to county attorney, item 10, there's a correction to the funding source, items eight through 11. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve. Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to item 12. What's the pleasure of the board? This is facilities management related to accelerate diagnostics.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve. Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Finally... Finally, procurement, item 13, and again, there was a correction to the termination date. What's the pleasure of the board on that?
All my idea.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve. Objections? Hearing none, motion carries. That brings us to the end of today's meeting. If there are no, there's no further business, this meeting without objection stands adjourned.